I'd like for us to start on time as much as we can. And we want to be mindful of everyone's time. Hello, Amber, and is that Brian with you? Can't really see. Okay. Councilmember, I mean, Clerk Kalinga, would you please start the meeting? Do we need to do a roll call for council?
Sorry, I was on mute. Councilmember Will Coxon?
Present.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Somerville?
Present.
Mayor Richardson?
Present.
Councilmember Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Simmons?
She said she would be late.
Did notify me that she was gonna be late or might not be able to make it. But if she can, she's gonna be late, so.
Councilmember Jones Chance? Sixth president, there's a quorum.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to excuse?
I move to excuse Councilmember Simmons.
Support.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the ayes have it. She will be excused. Thank you.
Mayor, next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Approved, so moved?
I'll support.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the ayes have it. Thank you.
All right, council, next item on the agenda is public comments. You'll have three minutes to make comments. If you'd like to do so, please raise your hand and then I'll call you on the, in the order that hands are raised. Individual with their hand raised is Lamar Weir and I'll allow them to speak now.
Good evening, everyone. Lamar Weir from Congresswoman Dingos office. One, just thank you for.
I didn't hear the last part.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, I didn't unmute. I thought I clicked it. So, good evening, Lamar Weir from Congresswoman Dingos office. First, just know, thank you for having me. Two, really interested in the conversation that's gonna be happening tonight. I know affordable housing is not only a big issue in our office for Washtenaw County, but particularly, you know, Ypsilanti has had some other meetings that we've been tuning into. So looking forward to not only just hearing the conversation, but also hearing about action steps and how we can be involved as well. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, council, if you'd like.
Thank you.
With their hand raised is T. Markay at Comcast.net. Allow them to speak now.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening. Good evening.
City Council. Mayor, I'm, I'm coming on here today because I have an issue. My name is Tracy Markray. I've been in Ypsilanti for over 30 years. Good friends with Anthony Williamson, pastor Wembley. I went to Eastern Michigan with them. And so I bought a property up here about 10 years ago. And every notice that I've gotten from that property has come to me, whether it's my inspections need to be done, whether I assess trash in the yard because I rent that property out. So you never know what kind of tenant you're getting. My problem is, I just looked at my 2020 winter tax bill. I have two charges from the AHB of $375, not once, but twice. I called Mr. Andrew and talked to him about it. And he seems that he has mailed these things out to me. And so I asked him, when was these things supposed to be mailed out? This go back to 2016 and 2018. And he said the violations were snow removal. Now, I've paid all my, I even got a letter for it. Didn't pull a permit for a roof. I took care of that. $375 comes up to $750. That's, I'm trying to get this removed. I'm trying to get this sorted out. And I, yeah, 2016 and 2018, I've paid my taxes on time every year in the last 10 years that I've had this property. And for this to go on my taxes, $375, what kind of snow removal cost somebody $375 for not even 12 feet worth of sidewalk? Is what I'm asking. So I'm asking for the city council and the mayor for some help to get this bill removed or even go back. If you can send me something of the original fine or something, but $375, not once, but twice. I just need some help.
All right, thank you, Mr. Markray. If you're, if that's, if you're done, we will, I don't know, I, I, we don't go back and answer things right now, but I will certainly get back with you. I will talk with Mr., to the Clerk Kalinga and also Mr. Bar and see if there's any, see, try to follow up on that.
I would appreciate, I would appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
All right, council, it doesn't look like anyone else in the attendees list currently has their hand raised. Might a few moments to see if anyone would like to make comment. Okay, seeing, seeing no further comment, if council would like to move on to the, the, the next section for the work session and move on to the discussion of housing affordability strategies.
Yes, we're gonna follow the agenda, please. Okay, and I see that there's remarks from the mayor. I have very few remarks for, at this time, just want to say that I am glad that we are having this work session. I know that affordable housing is a real issue in the city, but it's not just an issue here in the city. It is an issue throughout the nation. And housing prices and rent, rental fees continue to go up and up. And again, it's not just here in Ypsilanti, not just in Washtenaw County, but it's really throughout the state and throughout the nation. I hope that we can come up with some ideas of how we can possibly handle or get a handle, a greater handle on what's going on with affordable housing here in Ypsilanti. I had Mr. Myers check for me a week or so ago. And we have over 880 affordable housing units here in the city. And it seems like it's maybe my, what I'm hearing is it's still not enough. However, when we do have affordable housing available, the, it's particularly if it's subsidized, then the, it's not always filled with people and residents that are people from the city or residents of the city. When it's subsidized, it's open to anyone that wants to apply. And so that seems, I think that adds to the fact of why we don't always, doesn't seem like we're moving ahead or getting a handle on it. Because people are coming in from outside to partake of the subsidized housing. And it leaves our people still wanting. I'm not sure how we can handle this, but I am looking forward to the discussion tonight. And I hope that we can come up with some, some ideas or at least face this problem head on. So with that, I will end my remarks for this time. And move on into the work session. I believe we had some presentations. Clerk Kalinga, let's go with the presentation.
Yes, this presentation is from the Affordable Housing Committee.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
So I don't know if they'd like to share their screen or I can bring it up?
Andrew, I had trouble sharing my screen last time I attempted. So if you don't mind doing it, that would be great.
Sure.
And while he's bringing up the screen, when we do get into discussion, I cannot see everyone on my screen. So if you all would help me know that somebody's hands up to and wants to speak, thank you.
Andrew, if you could move on to the next slide, thank you. So we, we don't want to spend a lot of time as the Housing Affordability and Accessibility Committee on our presentation this evening because we really want to maximize the conversation and dialogue. But we do, we did prepare an abbreviated version of the presentation that we gave to Planning Commission. And we hope that this will provide some helpful context to kick off our conversations. So basically, the, as you may know, the house, the Subcommittee or Citizen Committee on Housing Affordability and Accessibility was launched by the Planning Commission in late 2017. And this was in response to us hearing repeatedly from residents concerns about rising rents, displacement from the city, and lack of both affordable and physically accessible housing for people with disabilities. So we really got rolling in 2018. And one highlight from, from that first year of our work was that, with some support from then-councilmember Pete Murdock, there were, there was funding allocated by city council with the intent of going into a sort of Ypsilanti Housing Trust. The committee continued its work through 2019. And we completed our work this year, presented to the Planning Commission in August, I believe. And just to highlight sort of current context as a backdrop for our discussions today, obviously, we're in the midst of a very serious COVID-19 pandemic. We've also seen this year a lot of awareness raising around the role of systemic racism and anti-black violence in the United States. And while a lot of the attention within that conversation has focused on issues of police brutality and violence, it's also true that there is this long history in the United States and in Michigan and in Washtenaw County and in Ypsilanti of land use and associated policies that have furthered racial segregation and have marginalized black communities. And so it's important to bring that into this discussion. And we've tried to, to use that knowledge of our history to guide our work as a, as a committee. And the last thing I'll mention here is that there is, the Nationwide Eviction Moratorium is due to expire very shortly. And there's been a lot of speculation about exactly what the fallout from that is going to be. But I think we can all agree that it's, it's going to be very damaging. And the estimates, I think, are close to 30 million people are potentially at risk of, you know, having to leave their homes. Next slide, please.
Heidi, you're getting very, you're getting very garbled and.
Oh, no. I don't know if it's better to hand this slide off to someone else then.
I can hear you clearly. I don't know if anyone else is having issues.
Yeah, this is pretty clear to me.
Okay, Heidi, before you go, we missed, Heidi, before you go on, we missed a lot of what you were saying. The last bullet point, because you were garbled and your voice was, you were locking up.
Okay, the, so my last bullet point was basically just providing context from this year and talking about the awareness raising that has happened around systemic racism.
We're not hearing you at all now.
I can hear her just fine.
Yeah, we can hear her. Mary, it may be your connection because I can hear her completely clear.
Can you hear the rest of us?
Mayor, can you hear us?
I can hear, I heard your voice, but I didn't hear. If Heidi's been speaking, I haven't heard her.
There's been three other people that have said something.
No, I'm not hearing you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does it seem, Mayor, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, and so I'm, I'm just going to continue on to the, to the problem statements. So our committee identified five major problem statements with respect to housing affordability and accessibility in the city. The first is that the cost of housing continues to increase steadily. The second is that our existing data and our measures on housing affordability and accessibility don't really capture the full situation that we're seeing here locally. And one example that I would just underscore there is something, connects to something that the mayor was just saying about how when we have subsidized housing, it's not necessarily people from our community that are, you know, accessing that. And, and we believe that, our committee believes that part of the reason that that is the case is that generally, we're using area median income to determine eligibility for those types of units. And that's calculated on a county-wide basis. And so obviously, that skews towards Ann Arbor-level incomes. And that can have the effect of disadvantaging people that are residents of Ypsilanti and have lower incomes. A third problem statement is that our housing stock is very old and that can pose health, safety, and accessibility challenges. Fourth, we don't have a lot of land available on which to build new housing. And fifth, current and past policies at the federal, state, and local levels have contributed to our current affordability and accessibility challenges. And with that, I will hand it over to Amber to pick up on the next slide.
Counsel, good to see you all and everyone that's in the meeting. So I am talking about public input. We had a multi-stage process. First off, we circulated a survey online and, and paper questionnaires in October 2018. And we got about 600 respondents for that. And that was just to kind of get the most current information on the nature and magnitude of housing affordability, accessibility issues. Because, you know, the data that we pulled didn't ask all the detailed information that we were seeking. So that was a really helpful survey. And then we conducted a couple interviews with some landlords of residential properties in Ypsi, a small one, a medium-sized landlord, and one large property owner. And then we held an open forum in May to present the survey and interview findings to the public and solicit more public input. And that was, I believe, in 2019. And then we did our final survey, which drew from the first survey and the interviews and the open forum where we put together some housing strategies. And we proposed 26 different strategies to see which were most supported by the community. And we organized those into different categories. And we got those results back and they showed there was a lot of welcome from the public in several policies. And then the last thing we did was the, we did more public input throughout our meeting together the last two years. We had some gaps and limitations as far as representation goes in our surveys that we want to acknowledge, of course, but these are not, you know, uncommon gaps that happen in a lot of these types of data sets that when people are collecting. So, you know, we always need to do, improve on that. And then, hmm, I would just say, you know, it's worth checking out those two surveys. The information in them are really interesting. And there's some things that jump out that, you know, a lot of us didn't know, but maybe felt. One of them was that almost 10% of respondents said that they've been discriminated against due to their source of income, which of course, you know, there's been some source of income changes in our policies the last couple of years. And that was even before that data point came out. But that, that a point was confirmed that the issue is real. So, and then lastly, more than 50% of respondents could also be characterized as having experienced housing insecurity based on the responses in Ypsilanti. And that's, you know, significant. So something to take from the survey results. All right, I think I'm passing it on to the next slide. And this, oh, actually, I might be presenting the next slide. I'm sorry about that. So we're doing a very abbreviated, abbreviated version. So what I'll just say about this is that I talked a little bit about the findings. Over 50% are cost burden. You know, people that are cost burden are usually the same folks that are moving frequently because they need to move once a ten, or the landlord raises the rent. And so you're also constantly moving and it's very disruptive to your life. And then another finding was that the, the, the housing that's available is not necessarily as available to everyone the same way. There's been a sharp decline in homeownership to, you know, current renters and also younger folks that in the past were able to access homeownership in Ypsi a little bit easier. Next slide. And then for accessibility, you know, we have to acknowledge that, first of all, accessibility is not limited to just folks that need, need wheelchair access. According to the broader definition of disability, 32% of Ypsilanti residents are living with a disability. The highest concentrations of residents with a disability are in areas with the lowest average income. So those maps map onto each other perfectly. And then survey results further emphasize the basic fact with two-thirds of survey respondents reported that their houses, their homes have no accessibility features. Over one in four reported that barriers to physical accessibility in a home had limited quality of life. And I think we're probably ready for the next slide. Okay, maybe I'm presenting on this slide too. We used to, we did this presentation before with like six other people, so let's see.
Amber.
Oh, are you doing it?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thanks, Des.
Hi, everyone. This is Desiree. So I'm gonna talk about the recommendations that our committee came up with. Just a couple of quick notes. I want to highlight something Amber was mentioning, which is that we started off with presenting 26 different solutions to the community. And what we're presenting today, what we are highlighting are some of the things that were most popular with the community or what we were looking at as most favorable. So we were looking at both favorability as well as the areas that we thought would address the problem statements the best. And this is also true even with the skew in respondents toward more white respondents, more homeowner respondents. So I just want to highlight that. Also, once we get to the last slide, we'll be talking about showing how some of these recommendations might look in phases and on a budget year timeline. And so these are some things, there are some things that we see that could have a really big impact, but would not cost the city specify like dollars and cents in order to do. And so those are things that we would have in phase one. And then we also broke up the recommendations based on different areas of focus. So this first slide is talking about recommendations around renters' rights. So tenant right of first refusal would give tenants the first opportunity to purchase properties from the property owner by enacting a tenant right of first refusal.
Desiree, you're having some audio problems too.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, Ray.
That sounds clear to me, Des.
You hear me? Yeah? You hear me? Okay. So, and then the other one we have is the Just Cause Ordinance, which would protect renters from improper eviction by enacting a Just Cause Ordinance to protect, so from displacement for improper reasons. And I just want to note that the Just Cause Ordinance is one that we see within the first phase. Next slide, please.
The next set of recommendations are on sustainable development. And so an affordability and accessibility ordinance would enact, would, to define the parameters for affordable and accessible housing based on Ypsilanti's median income rather than county-wide median income. And two, would require new housing development that receive public funding or tax subsidies to include a percentage of affordable and accessible units in line with Ypsilanti's needs. And we see this as being something that would be in line for how we have things around fair wage ordinances and things like that. And also, as Heidi kind of mentioned, that the Ypsilanti median income and the area median income are not in line. And so even if we think about how many housing units we have, if they're, we can't house the folks who live here because they can't afford to live here, right? And so we're not necessarily even making it, we're not even defining affordability based on who's in our communities now that we want to keep in our community. So that's something that we see under that first phase as well. We also talk about a homeless shelter. Build or establish an overnight shelter in Ypsilanti to meet the needs of residents who are experiencing homelessness. And this is something that we see within the third phase as it will take a lot of work because we, as we already mentioned, there's not much land to build on. So even building a homeless shelter would be, is a barrier. So that will take some more time, as would establishing a community land trust, which is something that could promote long-term housing affordability and accessibility through community control of land and private ownership of structures. And so this is an area where we see there is a lot of room for also more learning and partnership to in the community. Next slide, please. Next, we're looking at need-based assistance. And these are things that we see as part of a second phase, which would help to assist low-income people with home buying who wish to purchase a home by offering credit improvement services and mortgage down payment assistance and things of that sort. As Amber mentioned, that Ypsilanti, you know, has had a mix of housing. I know a lot of communities, a lot of neighborhoods have changed in different ways during the foreclosure crisis here. But even for folks, even just generationally, which I know there's many groups that are outside of this, but for millennials like myself, just given so many of the challenges that we've faced economically, you know, Ypsilanti and our area has really low kind of economic mobility opportunity based on generation alone. And so homeownership is something that is really hard to even imagine. And Ypsilanti has been a community that, where that wasn't the case, but it is very much that way now. And then also looking at minor home repair. So again, thinking about folks who might be longtime homeowners even, some seniors, for instance, where, where minor. where minor home repair programs to assist with costs for things like roof replacement, plumbing replacement, mechanical, electrical replacement, ADA ramp installation or repair, door modifications and lead or mold remediation could really help a person stay in their home for longer. And also would help support, you know, them from getting maybe different notices or things from the city, you know, because of disrepair. Next slide. Also, so some recommendations around accessibility. So the visitability ordinance, so this is something we see within the first phase. To ensure that newly constructed homes incorporate basic accessibility features that make it easier for mobility impaired people to visit or live in Ypsilanti. And then the next slide, please. Zoning, looking to increase the number of unrelated individuals who may reside together in a dwelling by changing the ordinance to allow to use a person's apartment in a dwelling. This is something that the committee was asked to look at from the planning commission. And I think the planning commission was asked to look at this from city council. And so that's something that we would recommend. And then also considering the additional changes to the zone ordinance to reduce restrictions on construction and or conversion of multi unit homes, ADUs and smaller scale homes. And then next slide, please. Advocacy and partnership. So one of the things that we found that was very popular. Both with residents here in Ypsilanti, but as well as thinking about people. We've heard from folks all over the state around rent control. And advocating with lawmakers to grant municipality authority cap annual increases. And so really looking at the preemption law. And so, and then the other one is to ask universities to invest in our YPSY trust fund. One of the things we already have seen, the power of having a trust fund. With the fact that the city was able to purchase a property. That is now being looking to be developed by Avalon Housing to include affordable housing. And that was only made possible because we had those funds in the trust fund. And so being able to have opportunities to do that would be huge for the community. And the trust fund could also be used to support some of these other things that we've been talking about in terms of support. And then. Okay, then I think we're going to the next slide.
So this is our, this is our nice graphic that shows kind of the implementation and pathway. And the timeline for what we were thinking could happen. So Des was kind of referring to phase one, phase two, phase three. So I'm just going to just touch on that really quickly. The thing that's not included in the graphic is that we do recommend in phase one to promote some of our existing policies that address some of these issues, such as the source of income and the felony background protection and our non discrimination ordinance. So to do public outreach campaigns around that to raise awareness. We're also recommending to make the existing YPSY housing trust permanent. Currently, it seems to exist without permanent funding. And maybe we can find out some diversified funding to keep that going and make it sustainable. And we also are recommending to allocate a significant portion of an existing staff members' time to coordinating and monitoring housing affordability and accessibility. So to continue on the work of this body, because after tonight, we are done. So it's been about two and a half years and what we've learned is that there's a lot more work to do. So we need someone dedicated to this work, either staff or I think maybe a commission could also do the work as well. And then in the actual policies, what we decided to recommend was these more low barrier policies. As Des has said in the past, no cost, I think that's what you've said in the past. Let me reference my notes. Yeah, cost neutral, I like that. So, you know, the the policies that you can enact today would be the affordability and accessibility ordinance, the just cause renewal ordinance. Raising the unrelated adult occupancy limits, initiating some advocacy efforts. Including you can start talking to the state about, you know, extending the eviction moratorium, that would be super helpful. And the tenant right of first refusal. So those are all kind of low barrier policies in phase one that could be started today. And then phase two, we're thinking next year. Drafted affordability focused acquisition plan for foreclosed multi units. And introduce introduce the need basis assistance for home buying and minor home repair. And then phase three really just indicates kind of a longer term goals. And we would put the homeless shelter and establishing and investing in a community land trust in that phase. And I believe we can go to the next slide.
This is the last slide.
Oh, last slide, great. I I think maybe what I might just say is that, you know, we wanted to do a quick version of this presentation, we have a lot to dig into with these things. And that's what we're here to do is mostly dialogue and talk in detail about it in conversation. So thank you so much.
Thank you Heidi and Des and Amber for that presentation. So I think Andrew, if there's no more presentations, then we could maybe go on to open the discussion. Amber, did you have, did Day have a presentation?
We have a very short presentation because we also want to leave most of the time for dialogue. But we can do that now, is that okay?
Yes, please.
Okay. Oh, can you enable participant screen sharing for me, Andrew?
Should be able to share your screen now.
Okay, thank you so much. And yeah, apologies for the overlap. So I'm both in the housing committee, which is ending after tonight, and I'm also in Defend Affordable YPSY. So I'm going to be helping a little bit with this presentation, but Brian's going to be doing the bulk of it. Oh, I just want to say that, you know, Heidi already covered it. But the pandemic really kind of clears any obfuscation around some of the societal issues we're all facing. And it's bringing it into the public consciousness. So people are understanding kind of, you know, how how homelessness, housing insecurity and mass evictions are right in our community. And the combination of the efforts of the housing committee and with Day doing this petition as well as this joint meeting with council. We have an opportunity to start enacting our intentions in these tangible policies that can help residents in YPSY stay housed and help our community thrive, hopefully. So just want to say thank you again for having this joint meeting, it means a lot. And I'm just looking forward to the conversation on how to move forward with some of these or many or all of these policies. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, council. My name is Brian, I think I've met most of you, but it's nice to be here. And I also appreciate you giving us this opportunity and we're going to try to keep it really quick. So we did present to council on August 18th, so hopefully some of you remember that. But basically, at the same time as the Housing Affordability and Accessibility Subcommittee was wrapping up. Defend Affordable YPSY tried to get a petition on the ballot for some of the most popular tenant protections that were found from that report. And that didn't quite work as we'd like it to, and we talked about that on August 18th. So I don't want to go into that too much, but an attempt at rent control, right of first refusal and a just cause lease renewal were on that ballot. And so just to make sure it's distinguished. They talked about just, or I think Heidi talked about just cause eviction rules. And we also sort of wanted to add to that, that if we make it so that landlords basically need a just cause to evict a tenant even in between leases, that that could have a big effect on keeping people housed. So since August, we have started working with the legal services of South Central Michigan. And they have helped a lot in in research of different policies and aspects to them. Yeah, so next slide to you.
So in addition to the four policies, which, you know, we're going to talk about in detail, I think. We also want to ask for an additional policy to be considered. Because of the context of what is going on in YPSY right now with Water Street. So it's also in the housing committee report that affordability accessibility ordinance. And the the way that ordinance, it was inspired by YPSY's already existing prevailing wage and living wage ordinance. Which just sets the rates for prevailing wage and living wage. Which relates to like new contracts for labor in the city and that is referenced. So this is the same idea, this just sets what the standards are for what is affordable housing in Ypsilanti. So when a developer comes and you're negotiating affordability and what that means, you don't have to question it. It's already in ordinance, you refer to the ordinance and that's how you know what affordability means, as well as accessibility. So the idea is that accessible units, the percentage of which would be developed based on Ypsilanti's need. And I think the next thing I'm going to talk about related to that, oh, just can you scroll down here? And yeah, one of the examples I wanted to bring up is that the library lot in Ann Arbor, so that was a really contentious thing and it ended in a citizen petition. But before that, this developer core spaces wanted to develop in the library lot. And they offered 8% workforce housing, which is one usage that people use to describe some version of affordable housing. And it's in the 60 to 80% AMI range. So that's only affordable to someone making about $50,000, somewhere between 40 and $64,000 a year is kind of your earnings to be able to live in that. So, you know, I I think that may have been a critical flaw is that, you know, the workforce in Ann Arbor, when I think about it, it is service workers. And service workers wouldn't be able to live there. And I think maybe even some of the public employees of the city wouldn't be able to live there. And an example that the mayor has brought up in the past that I've always returned to is that the Water Street flats was also another example of a proposal in Ypsilanti in which our public workers, the firefighters and other city staff, a lot of them cannot afford to live in this entirely affordable housing development. So I think that this ordinance would really help respond to that particular issue. Especially in the context of a new development proposal for Water Street. And this next slide, which I will click to is the things that we're asking from this meeting tonight. So, you know, I understand that we can't achieve all of it, but we wanted to give kind of actionable items that we might be able to do. So one is that we're asking council to enact the policies that we're recommending outright or to put them to a ballot for a citywide vote. We're also asking to add the affordability and accessibility ordinance to that. We are also asking to have either a standing meeting with Defend Affordable YPSY every few months, every couple of months, or we're saying a standing meeting until tenant protections are enacted. Or what would be even better than that would do create to create a tenant protections commission. So that a city commission could just carry on the work. And then lastly, we're asking for staff to work with Defend Affordable YPSY to flesh out the details of the tenant protection article or the ordinance. Much like how the Ready Rising for Economic Democracy in YPSY and former attorney Dan Duchene worked together to form the details of the community benefits ordinance. And we're also asking the city to lobby the state for rent control.
Good, so, yeah, moving on and we're almost done. But just wanted to share some of the results from the research that mostly legal services has helped us do. So it related to what we're proposing. So there's extensive report from the Tacoma Housing Authority in Washington about just cause eviction laws. And they found that they reduce evictions. They found also that the reduction in evictions led to a reduction in houselessness and negative health effects. They also found that people of color and households headed by women were disproportionately affected by eviction. So to this extent, reducing evictions may moderate the racial and gender inequalities in the housing market. And basically, you know, the the rest of these, just give examples of the effectiveness of of these policies. So in San Francisco, actually, this was a study done by an anti rent control body, and they still found that rent control helped people stay in their houses. Units have been, affordable units have been preserved in Washington DC. And in Berkeley, they found that, looking at the effects on the market. Although there was some effect of putting in market rate housing on reducing displacement. The effect of subsidized housing had twice, twice the the impact. And, you know, these are other things that we can maybe talk about as the dialogue continues. But we did just look into some sort of alternatives to to some of the problems we we faced with the legal issues in in Michigan. So there is one example that was found of a trigger law on the books, it's in Washington. That is not related to Roe v Wade, so that's something to look into. It's, you know, displaced from here, but we do know that there is precedence for that in some some sense. Other places like in Connecticut, they have, it's not legal for municipalities to enact rent control laws. But they do have these excessive rent increase bans. So they actually have boards that look into that and can can stop a landlord from raising rent. And, you know, again, it's unclear whether this would be legal in Michigan. But even if it's not, it could be another avenue to sort of like angle with the Michigan state government and possibly to to leverage. There's also the idea that unit registry that we are proposing to sort of link up with the rent control is enacted through sort of the inspection process that is already in place. And for instance, in Cleveland, that's how they do it and they also make it that you can't evict a tenant at all if you don't have your units registered. So it's like sort of a way to to keep that fair. And next slide, that's about it. You know, since You know, since International Village, we have not seen as many proactive efforts to keep housing truly affordable as we would like. We have, the city has passed the Community Benefits Ordinance, which is great. Hopefully, in the next couple of months, as the Kaufman Jacobs proposal might come in or a deal might be made, we'll see more preemptive action on the CBO to get ready for it being enacted, if it is. And so, you know, overall, and as Mayor Alan Richardson said, the time is right for, for the city government to help ensure a longstanding collaboration in the creation of good conditions for renters who are seventy percent of city residents. So we appreciate this opportunity to dialogue very much, and we're hopeful to see what comes of it. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to all those that presented, thank you. Lots of information there.
Sorry.
Okay. Clerk Kalenga, does that just bring us straight to discussion or what on the agenda?
It's just a discussion.
All right, thank you. Okay, who wants to start the discussion off? No, okay, I see your hand, Desiree.
Hi. Just, I was just looking, something that Brian was saying around, I guess I should also say, so I'm also both on the Subcommittee and in DAY. So, this comment is related to DAY, something Brian was saying about the evictions and looking at some of the outcomes. I just wanted to lift up, based on some research that was done here by the legal services and the U of M Poverty Solutions. And they were looking at eviction numbers. And just to name, so for the city of Ipsilani, we were at twenty point eight percent for eviction filings, this is in two thousand eighteen. So in Ann Arbor, the city of Ann Arbor is at two point two percent. And the county was at eleven point three percent. And so really, it's Ipsilani and the Ipsilani Township really pulling the eviction percentage up for the county. And at eleven point three percent, that placed us at twenty-fifth of eighty-three counties for the state of Michigan. So, you know, I think as we're talking about anything that we can do to help reduce evictions, I think would be, go a long way. But I just wanted to kind of add that in some number.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Mayor, can you see Steve's hand? Councilmember Wilcox's hand?
No, that's what I said, I can't see everyone's hand, so please, just let me know, okay.
Thank you, thank you, Anthony. I just want to say thank you to the, to the Subcommittee and DAY for the, for the presentations. You know, I read through the reports and, you know, I, I recognize, you know, one of the first statements in the, in the presentation is the, the lack of the gaps in the data. And, you know, I was reading through the, the report and, and recognizing those gaps and the, and the caveats. And so I just wanted to thank you for pulling all that information together, it came from a lot of diverse sources. And, you know, thank you for, for putting out there that there, there's a lot of information that this doesn't convey. And that's not available, and, you know, I think we need to, to kind of look at that. But I think this gives us enough information to, to move forward on a number of things. One of the things that, that caught my eye was the just cause eviction. You know, the, the state of Michigan has a just cause clause in the state statute. And so I was curious to hear from you folks, you know, what, what's missing from that? And what in addition would be, would you be suggesting for a, a city ordinance?
That one. So, as far as the Housing Committee and, and the policy recommendation by DAY goes, I do think there may be some space in between them, because with the policy recommendation per day, we're specifically targeting lease renewals. And so we, we are actually referencing that just cause state statute that you've just referenced in our petition, saying per MCL dot, 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 dot. We would like to extend that to lease renewals as well. So it's the same rules applied to lease renewals. That's not to say that the current just cause statute is very good. It's not, and it has, we're, we've been doing some more research and it has some caveats buried in where, you know, landlords, if they write in different measures to evict someone upon, and they, and they can refer to their own lease to do evictions. But that is in the case of someone that does not have a lease generally, or their lease is ending. So I still think that renewals with referring to that state statute would prevent a lot of evictions that are happening.
So you're, 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 you're putting together not renewing leases and evictions. And, and I've always looked at those as very different things. So, thank you for, for clarifying that, I mean.
There is another state that does it too. Or, sorry, there's another city that does it, the renewals.
And where would that be?
I do believe that's in the Pacific Northwest, I can't remember exactly where it is.
Is that Tacoma, or, okay?
No.
Mr. Linga or, or Mr. Bar, point of order. In work sessions, are the, those that are not panelists, are they allowed only to speak during the audience participation time, or are they allowed to speak during the discussion?
You would have to be a, a member of one of the groups that are, are a part of this work session. So they would have had to have made comment during public comment.
I just had a, a follow-up question to that. In terms of the, I think Amber spoke to the DAY notion of the renewal. You know, what's the, what's the difference between that and what is being proposed from the Subcommittee itself?
And I don't know if Heidi wants to speak to that. I mean, maybe one thing I will just start it off with is that the Subcommittee report came, those, those policy recommendations were circulating in that survey quite early on. And DAY put together a petition after that. So, you know, we, we referenced those policies and we made an adjustment to that one, based on the effectiveness.
I, I actually believe that we, because we went through several iterations of our report before we finally finalized and circulated it. I do believe that in our, the report that was shared, we also connect the renewals in with the, with the just cause. So I'm not sure there's as much daylight between the DAY recommendation and, and the committee recommendation, actually.
Someone sent me a text, I believe it was come, Councilmember Brian, and that I'm having trouble, and I am having trouble with hearing a lot of the things. So, Council, Mayor Pro Tim Brown, would you please take the meeting? I'm going to leave and zoom back in and see if that would correct my problem.
Will do.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown, okay, thank you.
I don't know if you can hear me. Okay, no, I, I'm sorry, okay, all right. So, Councilmember Wilcox, and were you finished with your question?
Yeah, for that topic for now, sure.
So I will entertain other hands or comments. Councilmember Morgan.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I just want to thank everybody who participated in these research projects and in these commissions. And lots of a lot of groundwork going into these presentations. When I asked a question, this is, I didn't read it, but I know in the discussion where, in the part where it was interviewing with landlords and they said there was a, a small, a medium and a large ownership of property. And it wasn't clearly defined, is, is small like one to four, medium seven to ten, and large ten or more properties? How was that defined?
I don't know, I, I was like, I can look up, I could look up kind of what our ranges were. Unless anybody else remembers, so.
I don't remember, yeah, I don't remember the thresholds offhand. But, but say, the, the ones that, that you, throughout Councilmember, are probably roughly akin to what we were using. So the small landlord was, let's say, you know, six units or less. Medium would have been, you know, in the double digits, and large was very large, like triple digits.
Like, like hundreds?
Yes.
Have you identified more than three landlords in our city that have more than a few hun- hundred or more units?
We didn't, we didn't do a, a survey of, of landholders for this. It was, that, that was just a piece of qualitative data collection that we did to, to supplement the survey work that we were doing.
Okay, um, thank you. Wait, please, Desiree.
No, I just wanted to kind of add, I'm just like kind of looking at, you know, some of the ranges. So, but I just wanted to say, so we wanted to do this, the Subcommittee decided to do the interviews with the landlords, because this came up during some of our meetings early on. And people were asking questions about, you know, about things that, you know, how landlords would respond to this and that, and things of that sort. And also that we needed to have a sense of, of the market and things. And so, that's one of the reasons we decided to do the interviews with the landlords. So just to kind of name that was a kind of a response to our, our process. And that we were able to ascertain lots of different things from those interviews too, which, so it was helpful. For instance, some things that I found really interesting is really to think about how, you know, one landlord could really be setting the market for rentals based on how many units they have, because smaller landlords are looking to what larger landlords are charging also, as to set their pricing. And so, you know, so we talked to someone who has a one to four.
When you say one to four, you mean like one house with four individual spaces or four individual?
Yeah, I just missed out. So, we interviewed someone that had five, so we asked about owned or managed. So, you know, there's a little bit of a range there. So, we looked at, a small was like five. A lar- a medium had, let's see here, six houses or structures which had, you know, had a different variety, a couple of duplexes, some four units, but about, you know, twenty, twenty plus, twenty-ish apartments. And also, some folks had apartments both in Ipsilani as well as in other places. So we were able to kind of get a sense of, there is, you know, we were, we were just to get a sense of some of the difference in the market between like here and Arbor, as an example. So all of the, all of the apartments weren't necessarily in Ipsy. And then, yeah, and then the large one, so.
Okay, um, I have another follow-up question. And by definition, affordable, I know it's inexpensive and reasonably priced. And that's, that could be very broad definition based on income, who is affordable for. And I want to speak about the, um, the first, the rights of first refusal. Not that I agree or disagree with it, however, I'm wondering, is there any new language that is attached to that specific position that gives a time stipulation? Because again, if there was a family who rented a home for six years, then the owner wanted to sell it, and they already have some equity and different things into it, it would be more considerable than someone who was there for six months and found out that the owner wanted to sell it and then thought they had first rights to it. Or, I think as me and, or if someone wanted to sell it to someone in their family, as opposed to the person who was renting it, you know. So are, is any other language that would give space or clarity or specificity to some of these nuances?
If I have the exact answer for you, but all the tenant right of first refusal policies that I've seen have noticing limit requirements. So you have to give sometimes a six, six months or a year, sometimes even longer than that in, in advance. So, I don't know if that really applies to new tenants. But the idea is that, you know, tenants in a multi-unit building or even a single structure building would know in enough advanced time to be able to arrange to possibly purchase either outright or with the help of a third party.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm done at this juncture, Mayor Pro Tim, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morgan. I see, Mayor, you're back, or is your sound better?
Yes, I am back, it's, it seems to be working better. Yes, thank you very much. Councilmembers, Wilcox, and I saw your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to follow up on the right of first refusal. Yeah, I, I know people that have bought properties from their landlords. Again, you know, as Anthony was saying, that, you know, long-term tenants, it's one thing, so that, that's part of it. But, you know, I guess it comes down to, you know, how do you, how do you define outside buyers? You know, so the, the one thing, example that, that Anthony gave was, you know, if you want to sell it to somebody in your family, and you don't want to give it to them, but you want to sell it to them. And if you have this clause in there, then, then you're prohibited from doing that. So is there something about, you know, defining outside buyers in that? And how do you, how do you define outside buyers? Because I, I, I see this, I see, I, I anticipate that there will be pushback on this one, just because you're, you're dealing with something that somebody owns and, and telling them what they can do with it. I mean, telling them that they have to keep it up is one thing, but telling them that they, they can't sell it to whoever they want, it's gonna take a stretch to get people to onboard with that.
Mr. Wilcox, do you mind if I respond to that one?
Sure, sure.
Anyone else mind? In the case of a family member, as, while it would be a sale, it would, it would also be an intra-family transfer. And so typ- typically, those are even exempt from taxes in a lot of cases, so. So that's already in language somewhere, I, I don't think that would be an, an issue with that. With that ordinance.
I agree with House Member Jones' chance on that. I, I think, I think it's a really good question, and I, I think you're right that people are going to be concerned about the details. And I don't know the exact answer to that either, but I've seen some of these policies and they get very detailed as far as.
seen some of these policies and they get very detailed as far as like the exceptions, the rules, and even with rent control, one exception is always family, uh, sorry, is always, uh, if, if, uh, you can, you can evict a tenant if you intend to live in the unit and you're the owner. Or you can evict a tenant if it's like fam- you know, first, uh, or of close relation family or something. So there are always caveats to that kind of thing.
And I would add that.
If I could. Was someone speaking?
I was gonna add something, but feel free to go ahead, Lois.
No, go right ahead.
I just, I guess I wanted to just, um, share kind of like what I saw, like, when looking those up. Just another aspect is that, you know, it, it seems like the, the spirit of these laws is to just sort of divert the um, more classic, uh, uh, selling of property to just kind of like the people in the market towards putting energy into giving residents a chance to, uh, home own. So that's kind of the, you know, the spirit.
If I could add here, I'm, uh, getting some, um, uh, some notes here from a realtor, another realtor that is in the audience and was not able to speak during, um, the audience participation. But, um, the realtor writes that a lot of the programs that were mentioned are already in place, but the agencies that are operating these programs are operating in silos. So everybody doesn't know about them. And I do know that, um, oh gosh, one of the last social work jobs I had, we, one of the agencies did have, um, um, homeowners, uh, education. And so that those things were, um, were, they are, they are available uh, within the city. I do know that. And also the, uh, down payment assistance is available. The people, the, um, prospective buyer has to go through a program of training. Uh, and I have, I have, uh, certainly encouraged a number of people to go through those, that were clients. But, um, and she, the realtor did mention that the tenant's rights of refusals can be added to a contract. And I don't know if that was mentioned while I was offline here. But it's, she went on to say, if however, the tenant is not a qualified buyer, then that whole thing is useless. And so that means that we need to, uh, work at getting the tenants so that they are really qualified to purchase the place if, if it does. And, um, the other thing is sales pr- uh, prices are based on the market. And we know right now that, um, the market is entertaining very, very high, um, high sale prices. Uh, there was a couple of homes, one down the street from me and one around the corner from me that in, um, from, from my perspective, they are really quite outpriced for the neighborhood. They were, uh, sold at $210,000. And that's, that's a lot. I, from my perspective, for the neighborhood, but the market is handling, um, accepting that during this time, so. Uh, Ashley.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Alan Richardson. I, I appreciate it. Um, I'm a member of the Housing Subcommittee. Uh, I'm a homeowner in the city and, uh, I'm not, I have, I'm really supportive of the work that he's doing, but I'm not a member of that group. Um, I think, I think that the tenant right of first refusal with the way that we're seeing, um, the market acting where people who don't have, um, different challenges, uh, with, with accessing, uh, financing and, and so forth, people who, who might, uh, be low income. Um, I think the fact that we are seeing all of these, all of these units, whether, uh, are the, the people that are renting them, um, in most cases, unless, unless subsidized in some way, are, are handling the costs of that, that lando- that, uh, landlord's mortgage as well as the higher tax rate. Um, and, and all of these, uh, various costs, uh, either if they're renting a home, they're handling it uh, outright or in some sort of, um, if there, there are multiple units, they, they can handle it, that they're handling that, that cost overall. I think it's really important that given how quickly the market is, um, how quickly units are being bought up and houses are being bought up, that going in and giving the tenants that opportunity to go ahead and figure out if they can get that financing, that they can, can go ahead and arrange, uh, to have the chance at buying the, buying the place where they live, uh, is a, is an important and, uh, powerful policy. I believe Desiree would, uh, has the hand raised.
Okay, and I'm sorry, my, um, it's messing up again. So I didn't hear a lot of what you had to say. Desiree?
Hi, yeah, thanks for that. I, I think, um, a couple of things that I could just, you know, like anecdotally, just from my own experience, I can think of, you know, before I moved to Ypsilanti, um, where I lived in Boston and I was a renter and like, like I wasn't thinking about home ownership. Like there was no way I was going to be able to afford it. Um, just like, just from what I had heard from other people. So it was like so outside of my purview. Um, so I was not thinking about, well, what, what did it look like to get funding? I, it was just so outside of my experience because there was just no way I was going to be able to afford even a down payment. Um, when I moved to Ypsilanti, uh, again, it wasn't really in my mindset, um, that I was going to be able to purchase. Um, and, um, but once I learned about kind of the, um, the cost of, you know, what it would take for me to be able to buy a home, um, and after I looked at like rental, like rental costs, which, um, I, you know, like I said, I moved from Boston. I was like, I didn't feel like it was actually that much less than what I was paying in Boston, um, in so many instances. Um, then I was like, oh, I need to start thinking about this. But even when we were just starting out, um, you know, things, yeah, things go really quickly for people who are already, um, you know, um, ready to go. And not just like first-time home buyers, but when you're really in a market, again, you know, everyone with all their financing and, um, especially with folks who were, um, you know, accumulating spaces that then were to, to rent, um, we just have different kind of financing opportunities. And so, you know, for me, I think about, you know, if I lived in a place that, um, where I found out, you know, like my landlord was like, I'm thinking about selling. Is this something interesting? Like that to me could be a thing that actually could spur people into recognizing that this could be a reality for them and that they could have more stability in a place, um, that they might not have imagined that was possible. Because it's not like everyone, um, you know, thinks that home ownership is a part of their life, right? And so I think that this also could be something that it's actually like opening possibilities. And I also think it's important to note, right? Like, there's a lot of folks who would, you know, they would get the notice and they would say, oh no, that's not me. I'm about to look for my next apartment. Like, I don't think, like, there's a lot of folks that are not going to just jump to it. I don't think, I think there's a lot of people that, that wouldn't necessarily speak to them because of all their different circumstances. Um, so I don't think that it necessarily is going to, you know, um, all of a sudden people are going to just be like hanging on to this, right? You know, I think people will, you know. But, um, I think for fo- some folks, um, who might have been starting to think about it more because they've lived here for a long time um, and want to make Ypsilanti their home, that could really, um, open up possibilities that they didn't know.
Thank you. Ashley, and then you, Brian.
I did, I, I've just really, uh, echo what Desiree is saying. I, I think that, um, as a homeowner where I have a, I, I'm, I'm paying a mortgage that, at a certain amount and a house that was, uh, directly next door to mine that, um, someone bought a ur- theater, printed it into a duplex and they're collecting and that is over three, between three and four times what I'm paying for my mortgage. Um, I think the fact that you could go ahead and, and at least give people the opportunity, uh, to, to have this, um, this, such you go purchase where they live, uh, is really important. And I also wanted to echo what you were saying, Mayor, that there, there are various services that are out there. And, and one of the things that we discussed and, and looked at was making sure that our, that our tenants in the city are aware of those resources, are aware of what protections are already on the books, um, and can protect them. Um, and also what services are available, uh, that they can access because those, uh, many times people are not necessarily aware of which office and what level of government, um, that they can access and what protections they might have. They they get told something by landlord and they think that's what they have to do and may not think that they have, uh, like extra protection for themselves.
That's true. And I, I think that, um, many ti- I'm sorry, Brian, you can go. You were, I had called Sid, you could follow him, but I was just gonna piggyback on some of he, what he was saying. But go ahead, Brian.
Okay, if you're sure. I just have something quick. Just, um, yeah, I mean, I, I was, I'm happy to hear that, um, Mayor, your, your realtor friend has seen this written into, or right of first refusal written into contracts. And I mean, I want to make clear that, um, what we're hoping for is for it to just become the standard and the, the law in the city for every contract. But I also just wanted to point out that, um, I, that, you know, what, uh, we are proposing, like Defend Affordable YPSU has been, um, proposing is really a, uh, an approach to this problem on multiple fronts at the same time. And so that, you know, if we can, you know, the city can help create like a, a culture of, um, renters' rights and where renters feel seen and like they have, uh, power, then that would, uh, benefit those who are in that position of not necessarily thinking that, that they can afford to buy a house. But, you know, hopefully they can have the, the knowledge to really know if that's a possibility for them. But I think that's multiple ways too, sorry.
Right, no, that's fine. Uh, one of the things too is that if, if I could have this here and then see it, Steve, I saw your hand, is that uh, I heard, um, some comments about people not being able to, uh, or feeling that they couldn't afford to buy. But if you're paying a thousand dollars a month rent, then you can afford to buy. Uh, it might not be the 210,000, but you can afford to buy. Uh, even if you're on Section Eight, I do know people on Section Eight that have purchased a home and still received, um, support from Section Eight. But one of the think of the thing, main things that we, we really need, and I haven't heard a whole lot of talk about was, is, um, just financial education or financial training for our people to know what they can do. Cause I think a lot of times just not knowing uh, hinders people from doing what actually they could really be doing. So I think that we need to encourage, um, financial training, financial education and a, uh, an educational plan around, uh, working with people to get them and prepare them to, uh, to purchase a home. Uh, Councilmember Wilcoxen, and then Desiree, and then Amber.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, in reading through this, this, um, this report, um, you know, I thought about all the different, uh, situations that I lived and rented and, uh, you know, from renting basement apartments that leaked from people who didn't care and, and living in co-ops and, and purchasing a house. Um, you know, I looked at this and I, this is a culture shift. And, and these are, you have great ideas to have out there so that, that, you know, and as Brian was saying, creating the culture where this is a normal, normative thing. In this particular thing in terms of, uh, right of first refusal, I was thinking about, you know, the different scenarios in terms of, yeah, it's fairly straightforward if you, if you're renting a house. Um, what happens there? But when you start to getting into bigger, um, bigger properties with multiple, uh, renters and then, then I started thinking of the co-op mentality and so like, and, and you know, everything you've just been saying about in terms of educating people of what the possibilities are and having that be something that, that is present in their mind, um, then that's where we need to be going with that. And, and, and I agree that, that that's there. And, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking, you know, what a great idea that, you know, there's a, there's a building with 10 tenants in it and they, they get together and get financing and they create a co-op which, which, you know, goes on and, you know, I'm about intentional communities and things like that. So it's just like, I think that'd be a great idea. I'm just, I, I'm just trying to, trying to envision the, the barriers to all of that. Um, and, and, you know, the spirit of the law is one thing, but, but, you know, this is going to be tested. Not, not only by, uh, by tenants, but also by landlords, you know, and, and that's the biggest part, right? Is that, you know, they have the money to, to test these things. And so we'll, we'll have to figure that out and, and give it our best shot. So, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Desiree, I remember, I think you were next, and then Amber, yes.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. Um, one is, um, that even a lot of like down payment assistance too, um, and I, I just wonder about like how they cover closing costs. Like I know I, that was something that was like such a big like thing that I learned about kind of going through one of those things. So like I went to a section that I've been killed um, to give information about buying a home. And, um, and then I still was like surprised with like how much the closing costs were. Um, and those are things, so that's just like another thing that becomes a barrier. And also when thinking about buying a home, you know, um, right, there's always the savings to be able to do. Um, and, um, you know, again, because I was in Boston and I figured it was going to be impossible for me to buy a home, um, until I was in middle age. I was like, I better start saving. And so that's honestly the only thing that saved me was that, um, I was saving and, um, and doing a lot of things in a market that had much higher costs. And so I was able, when I moved here, I came with some savings, but that's not the case. And one of the things that, um, I don't think, I also just want to, you know, say that I, it's not always about people mismanaging money or needing to go through a workshop for that. Um, that, you know, we talk about the cost burden, population of Ypsilanti. It's not because people are making money and then they're spending it in, um, ways that might seem frivolous. Um, it's because they're not being paid a wage that would, uh, allow them to be able to, uh, pay for housing and other things. And one of the things that our subcommittee did, um, in our first survey, you know, we actually asked questions about, um, um, we, because we wanted to get a sense of how much money people are paying toward, um, housing costs, how much money, um, you know, so how much did they think they were spending on housing-related costs? Um, what, um, what, after paying for their housing costs, what could they afford? And so, um, we had 94% of the respondents that they could resol- uh, afford basic needs like food and hygiene, um, 56% that they could afford healthcare, 54% that they could do leisure activities, um, 32% that they could do savings, and 20 and 4% that they could do none of the above, um, in addition to their housing costs. Um, and when looking at the amount, um, percentage of their, um, gross monthly income that they spent on housing-related costs, that, um, let me see here. Having a hard time like reading this and talking at the same time, but, um, um, and then you also have something like 63%. and then you also have something like 63% of people said that their housing costs have increased over the past, uh, four to five years. That, you know, so even if something seemed affordable at a certain point with the cost increasing that continue and wages not changing, then that means that they're continuing paying higher shares and still earning not enough, right? And so that means there's less money for savings. So, um, I just like wanted to lift that up that, um, you know, we, within our survey, you could see those results in terms of, um, what people are, you know, using their money for and how much of their money is going toward housing related costs. And then how much, how little that means that they could actually save, which then goes into what you're going to be able to get a loan for, right? You know, because it's not only based on what money you make in that moment. It's also based on what you have in savings and how long you've been making that money. So even if you wind up getting a job where, um, you have to, um, be able to be at that job for a certain amount of time. If you're self-employed, which is another way that a lot of people lift themselves out of poverty, you actually need to be self-employed in the same state for a certain number of years before you can get, before you're going to be able to get, um, a mortgage from a bank. So these are all things that I think, um, are just important to lift up as well.
Okay. Did someone have their hand up also after Des, to come after Des Rae? Was it you, Amber or Brian? No? Okay.
So many.
Anyone else?
I believe Amber's, uh, speaking.
Amber?
And then Heidi.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to organize.
So it's Amber that's next? Okay, go ahead.
All right, um, I think, you know, the initially I raised my hand to, it was to respond to, the right of first refusal and so many people have said it very, uh, well. I just want to underscore it's, it's simply an opportunity to, um, tenants, um, to give them first choice. But it doesn't mean that, you know, it's not going to go to market. Oftentimes these things go to market if the tenants don't want to participate in tenant right of first refusal. And then, um, you know, the way, I think Heidi knows more about this, but the way that, uh, tenant right of first refusal has been very successful, um, is because it's generally paired with a agency that provides funding. And so that is one thing that, um, you know, we don't necessarily have right now. And it'd be interesting to see if there was, um, interest around that to see if there could be a funding source for tenants that are interested in purchasing, uh, their building. And, you know, with respect to the, uh, large, larger buildings in town that had our multi-unit, do you think that's going to be more of a challenge sometimes for a tenant to buy that together? But, um, there was a group in Philadelphia that just bought, uh, three buildings with something like a thousand units in it, uh, for $5 million, um, in partnership with a third agency. And, uh, they were able to successfully do that. And I, in Ypsilanti, most of our structures were single family homes that were converted to multi-units. And it's not going to be as big of a challenge to, um, participate if tenants want to do so. And, uh, you know, uh, council member Will Coxon mentioned cooperative housing. That is something that, uh, the housing committee did ask in the survey, if people are interested in that type of housing and, um, and there was a lot of interest. And I would say that since that report, just talking to people about what would keep them in Ypsilanti housing or, uh, cooperative housing comes up a lot. It seems like there is a thirst for cooperative housing in Ypsilanti. And so I, I would be very supportive of just changing some of our rules to, um, I guess, encourage and incentivize cooperative, um, buying and, um, you know, opportunities to do so. So we could make it so it's easier to do cooperative housing because right now we have zero. And our neighbors have a lot. Canton has a lot. It's, uh, Ann Arbor has a lot. We have nothing. So I think it's something we could change and people will be very interested in.
Right, Heidi?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to, um, follow up on, um, the issue of, uh, city administered need-based assistance programs and, and talk a little bit about what might be some of the advantages of that type of assistance actually being managed at the municipal level rather than at higher levels such as the county level. So this would be, we would be talking specifically here about things like down payment assistance or a minor home repair program. Uh, and that could be targeted to, to groups like seniors. It could be targeted to people with a disability. It could be targeted in a, a number of different ways. I, I will say that although I'm aware that, you know, these programs exist in some, in some cases at the county level, they tend, in my view at least, not to be very well marketed to people. I think there, it's, it's somewhat difficult to actually find and track down the information about these. And I, and, and I think that one advantage to potentially administering, um, a program or funding like that at the city level is that the city is closer to its residents, uh, and better able to target that assistance in a meaningful way. You know, to, to neighborhoods where we're seeing a high rate of displacement or, you know, other, other places where we're, we're seeing a special need. Such as like when Ypsilanti lost, uh, you know, its affordable senior housing and knowing that that created, um, a new need. So that, that's just, I, I just wanted to sort of, um, share that viewpoint that I do think that there are some advantages to need-based assistance actually being administered by the city versus, you know, the, the state or the county. And the other thing that I wanted to raise here is just, um, I, I know that our, I think one of the limitations of our committee's report that is becoming, uh, clear to me right now is that, you know, when we list off individual recommendations, it can be a little bit hard to, to see them in an integrated fashion. Um, and I, but I actually think that a lot of these flow together very nicely if you start thinking of, about it. And so if you can package together, um, you know, uh, education on, uh, legal education really on, on how to like start a co-op cooperative housing. You can package that together with maybe some small seed funding and, uh, an ordinance on tenant right of fir- first refusal. You can see how those things start to work together effectively to really, you know, change the picture, um, for renters and to give people an opportunity that's not currently available to them. So I just wanted to make that pitch as well to, to, although we've laid out the, the recommendations in a fairly linear fashion, um, I think that there are some really interesting synergies between the different recommendations as well.
I don't have a hand at the moment, but.
Thank you. Okay, uh, yes, um, council member Jones Chance.
I had a couple of questions. I had a couple of questions about the right of first refusal since everyone's talking about it. And it, reading, reading through what was described here was really unclear to me how it would function and what exactly you're describing here. So if, I think I know what it is, but if you could, kind of give me an example of how you see it working.
I'm, I'm happy to take a shot at this and then if others want to, um, fill in or, or correct, uh, any, anything that I misstate. So this would be an actual ordinance like the other ordinance proposed, the ordinances proposed. And so what this would mean, you know, the specifics would have to be worked out. So we're, we are not proposing currently like exactly what the notice period would be. But if the city did adopt an ordinance on tenant right of first refusal, then when a landlord is, is going to sell the property that's currently occupied by tenants within the city of Ypsilanti, they would be required regardless of, of, you know, who they are, how many properties it is that they're wanting to sell. They would be required to give that advance notice, uh, to the tenants. So it would be, it would be cross cutting. It wouldn't be written into individual, I mean, it might be still written into individual real estate contracts, but this would be at another level. This would be at an ordinance.
Okay, so I think the issue is, and that kind of confirms my understanding is that that's, that doesn't describe a right of first refusal in most situations. Um, typically with a right of first refusal, there has to be a, a bona fide.
Are you done?
Uh, no. There'd have to be a, a bona fide offer. Um, and then once that offer is in hand, it has to be offered to the third party, uh, to refuse. That's a right of first refusal. I think what you're describing is an option. In which case that's sort of a whole other, uh, bag of worms and, uh, an option or would have the, you know, the right to require some type of monetary consideration outside of the, uh, what's allowed in the lease. So for example, someone mentioned that, uh, EC statute, which offers a 15-day right of first refusal. Um, that is after there is a bona fide offer. And so in, in that case, I'm not, I don't see how renters really get an advantage, um, especially in a city our size. The property would have probably already been on the market. And there would have been an opportunity to get financing and things like that. I do believe that it's best practice and maybe this is something that should be written into ordinance for landlords to notify tenants when they're intending to sell, uh, in most cases, unless there's something specific in the lease. To the contrary, a tenant is able to remain in the property even after the sale. Because their leasehold interest, uh, extends for the time of lease, doesn't matter who owns it. So, you know, I, I think, uh, based on what Des Rae was saying about, um, just even thinking something is an option, uh, a disclosure might be, uh, a good thing to require. But I'm, I'm a little confused about the use of the term right of first refusal because it, it sounds a lot like an option to me.
Can I, can I just address that? I think, I, I think there may, that this, um, term right of first refusal may actually be used in different ways depending on the context. So one context in which I'm aware that this is used is, is by HUD. Um, and they do use it i- in a way that's consistent with the way that is reflected, um, in the committee's report. In the sense that like when HUD is preparing to sell one of its properties, um, it, it sends out a notice, um, to, to tenants and tenants as prospective homeowners. Um, and it basically gives them a period of time to indicate their, um, interest in purchasing the home. And then the process rolls out from there, but they do, if they're interested, they are given, um, the quote unquote right of first refusal to purchase.
So I think an issue there is, uh, there may be some difference in, and you know, I'm no, uh, legal expert. I just happen to work in this subject area. I think an issue there might be Michigan's, uh, definition of a right of first refusal, which as far as landlords and tenants are concerned, would be the definition that we have to use. How does a federal agency and they can sort of, they can do what they want. So if it is an option, I think there are some legal limitations. And the fact that consideration for an option, uh, can be demanded. And since that, that agreement is separate from the lease, uh, we would have some issue. And it's, this might be why we don't see it in, in Michigan unless there are some examples where, you know, that we could sort of copy.
Are you done, council member?
Yeah, I was just, I think there were some responses and I wanted to.
And I just asked because I'm still having problems, uh, or they started up and actually I've, it locked, knocked me out a couple of times, so I haven't really, uh, I don't always hear. Is there any other, are there any other hands up? Okay, um, Des Rae and then Amber.
No, I just wanted to say, I mean, I appreciate a lot of what, um, council member Jones Chance is saying. And I, I think, um, and I wasn't able to kind of capture all the notes. But in terms of thinking about, um, how is it that we achieve the goals and the outcomes that we're looking for? I mean, and so if there, what, what some of that might look like, you know, I think is what's most important. To me personally, it's like what it's called doesn't matter. It's about like the outcomes and goals. So, um, yeah, so anyway, I think it's, you know, I appreciate kind of like thinking about some of these specific pieces, what it looks like here in Michigan, what, you know, and, and to think about what might help us get some of those still. To be able to still have some of that outcome, right? So if the notice for sale is early enough, then that would, you know, that could give a tenant, right? Like I think about the place, some of the places I've lived, you know, um, to be able to say, hey, oh, you're looking to sell, like I might be interested, right? That can open up a conversation between the tenant and the landlord, um, just from, just from them having that notice, right? And so, um, I think that there's, you know, different ways to get at it. And so I think however we can think about what those solutions look like is what is most important. I don't think it's most important that it's called this one thing or it looks like what this one thing looks like in this other place. It has to match what our needs are, which I think is what we're talking about overall is that these are some, you know, what actually helps the needs that we have here in Ypsilanti.
Uh, Amber?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to bring.
Amber, can you hear me?
Yes, I think, can you hear me?
Okay.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to bring another example of right of first refusal. Cause I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's how, um, the city repossessed 220 North Washington was through right of first refusal, um, because the, the city is privileged in that way. Um, was able to do, do that and able to bid it out to, uh, developer. And so, um, you know, I, it's a similar function. I, I obviously, council member Jones Chance knows some, um, details in the bureaucracies that exist. And that's going to be important in kind of moving towards like achieving these things, which I hope we are doing more so than advocating. So thank you. And Brian wants to say something.
Sorry, just to real quick, I, I'm kind of, um, been caught off guard a little bit by some of these comments because I'm just, I think maybe I was not aware of some other aspects. But I do want to be clear that, uh, in regarding the defend affordable IP petition, that, uh, would, the intention of that, that would have made it so that the tenant is, um, not just notified, but cannot, the, the landlord would not be able to sell it to anyone else before the tenant had their, 15 days or whatever it is to, uh, make an offer. And, um, the landlord would have to basically not, um, expect much more than, uh, market price for that unit. So that is an explicit right of first refusal, at least in the sense that I understood, uh, in the defend affordable IP petition.
Thank you. Uh, council member Morgan.
Thank you. I just want to make these few notes for the record and then I, I'm gonna sit back. I just want to, bear with me for about a minute. I want to make a few, um, this is how I see the thing. I, I, I do appreciate the overall study and I do appreciate the acknowledgement of some of the gaps in representation. I want to talk a little bit about the problem statements. I think problem statement two, where it says, uh, existing data and measures do not adequately capture the local situation with respect to housing and affordability. And so some of the key findings were important and they were dire. Um, however, some of the key findings when it comes to the discrepancy in income and opportunity, like for African-Americans, it was not surprising at all. And in fact, um, they've been longstanding and it's been special circumstances that have existed for decades. So some of those, with that being coupled into the study, which, but on page 61, where it says half of the, well, half of the responders earn between $50,000 and $100,000, even though our average median income is 36 plus thousand. Um, and, and out of those, and on page 56, 59, 77.6 of those were identified as, you know, Caucasians. But we're using this information about those who, um, But we're using this information about those who um have a historic plight. And when we're talking about plights and members of the community, knowing that in Washington County is one of the biggest income discrepancies in the nation. So when we're talking about targeted, we we I I want to know what are the targeted plans? Because since the Highway Act of fifty-six, since the Housing Discrimination Act that were targeted against certain people, there has to be fairly targeted solutions toward for these individual people that have been historically um in obstacles when it comes to housing. And so I know and on page thirty, it says at the very bottom, it's not a one-size-fit-all solution. Um it's from a combination of strategies. And so how specific is the strategies, knowing that this in particular, this particular data doesn't represent the total plight of those who had a historical um issue with housing systemically, uh whether through segregation, whether through a lot of, it doesn't speak to the 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 solution for some of these people. So I want to know um since it's not a cookie cutter solution and we do understand a certain minorities, like you mentioned, with some of these um potential um ordinances could alleviate some pressures um if passed. What's the thinking behind um moving along people who need housing security, affordability, accessibility versus the historic plight for specific people who've been kept out of that? So even though that information is in the research, it seems that people who have the most say are not those affected by it. Even though I I know a group of many people may have housing insecurity, affordability issues. So help me see those racial lenses and those gaps are coupled together to make some kind of um a unified statement. So I don't know if I'm asking a question, I'm just making an observation. That's and I and I could be um you you can enlighten me more, but so just to recap a little bit, I'm 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 hearing you, some of the information about blacks specifically and 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 low-income people have been historic. Those are not new things, especially here in Washington County. And this particular study has a overarching lens of people who are not in the range and the people we're discussing, but everyone needs the housing. So how does that under the same umbrella seem to compartmentalize itself? Thank you.
I think um one thing, I I I don't think I'll be able to respond comprehensively to that. It's a, it's a big, it's a big question and and I don't think um that our committee uh completely succeeded and in um answering this this big and and looming historical question. Um I would say that when we start to to really try to put a face to um the issues of housing affordability and accessibility, um our concern was really about um ensuring that people that live in Ypsilanti can continue to live in Ypsilanti. Um and and especially to prevent uh additional displacement from occurring. Um and I think that there are two, um you know, broadly, two categories of of people that are at risk of um displacement currently. And one would be renters who cannot afford to keep up with with rising rents. And another group would be um longtime residents who are being um you know priced out or displaced from from their homes. And and that would, that group would be homeowners. Um we are, our our committee reviewed as part of its early work our reports that had been done um by the city and the county previously on um the historically black neighborhood is south of Michigan Avenue. Um and so that went into our our thinking about this as well. One of um, one of our our twenty-six recommendations that didn't make the final cut in the eleven, um primarily because it didn't, it didn't get a lot of um positive, uh well, it didn't get as much positive feedback from the survey as the others. Um was that the city could potentially make changes to its uh administration of the neighborhood enterprise zones. Um and so the neighborhood enterprise zone, if you're, if you're not familiar with that program, uh it provides some uh tax credits uh to people who are um purchasing homes in or renovating homes uh in in a distinct neighborhood south of of Michigan Avenue. Um but the way that the city has administered that program right now uh favors like newcomers over uh longtime residents in that neighborhood. Um because if you're a newcomer who's newly purchasing a property and and fixing it up, you're eligible for uh tax credits of a longer duration than if you are already living in that neighborhood. Um so that, I would hold that up as an example of of something that the city could potentially do that would be very targeted to correcting a historic wrong.
And I just want to, oh, sorry.
No, you go, Des.
No, I just wanted to say, I mean, I appreciate what you're, what you're mentioning, councilman Morgan. Um just in terms of, you know, really like what is uh like a racial equity lens? And that, and I would, it's something that we talked about a lot within our committee. Um because that was something, you know, I know Heidi already kind of covered it, but I just wanted to like name that that is something that we did talk about a lot as we were looking at um the different issues and why we wanted to do the survey because we saw things were not borne out in the data. You know, there's a lot of things that kind of drove us in our process. Um and part of what made our work extend as long as it did, you know, we were supposed to be a ten-month uh subcommittee. So part of what extended it is because we were trying to continually get deeper and uh closer understanding um and to continually do more outreach and make sure that we were centering in based on uh you know, you know, the Ypsilanti and so and the heritage and the diversity um here. So that is part of what took us as much time as it did, to be quite honest, so.
Okay, um I do kind of wind down approaching the nine o'clock hour.
You're breaking up, Mayor. It's difficult to hear you.
It looks like she's.
Gone away.
Think you may have to take the wheel, Mayor Proton.
Yeah, um so I see your hand, Brian. I think she was wrapping up the meeting. Um so Brian, I'll take your uh comment and then yeah, she's gone. All right, go ahead, Brian, and then we'll wrap up.
Thank you so much, uh Mayor Proton Brown. I will be very quick. Um just, yeah, I I think that um what council member Morgan, uh the the sort of disparate impacts along racial and income lines is just so uh important and I think kind of just at the heart of the matter. So I I did see uh two things I wanted to bring up. One of them I did read during the um presentation, but um so in in Tacoma, and I'm going to just quote from the Tacoma Housing Authority. When they were looking at just just cause eviction rules, they found that uh people of color and households headed by women show disproportionately um up among the people evicted. And so to that that extent, reducing evictions may moderate the racial and gender inequities in the housing market. And then I I also, do you want to add something? I also just wanted to bring up the the um the fact that subsidized, building subsidized housing has uh twice the impact on um not displacing folks. So uh I don't have the data at hand, but uh anecdotally, it seems as though displacement is uh has a racial impact more than um, you know, just average. So it's like, you know, not white people who are being displaced. Um so that is just also a factor.
I just wanted to uh add that, you know, I I hear that, you know, wanting to wrap up, I would say I would feel uneasy if we didn't have like some sort of uh next step. Um as far as, you know, either another meeting in the future or um some intentions from council. Because it still feels like we're kind of, we're still kind of talking about what some of these are uh policies are and and familiarizing ourselves and seeing uh where there might be favor or where there might not be favor. And so it doesn't, it feels like a, there it's not a resolution to the meeting. So I would like to just hear from council members about where you're at, about any of these things or what might be the next step. Um so this doesn't just, you know, fall away because the Housing Committee is going to be done after tonight. Um and then just one very concrete tangible thing I want to uh say to council member Morgan is that we do have the data for um all the policy recommendations and all of the um actually, was it just a policy or, no, actually, uh for both the policy recommendations and the first survey that looks at the data for um gaps that we're looking for. And they, we have made it so you can actually look at different respondents based on demographics. So we can see that black respondents favored this thing more over something else. So we have that data and we can share it with you.
All right. So thank you. I just got a message from our mayor. She says she's going to try to call in, but since we're wrapping up, um I'm just going to go ahead and and as she asked me to. So basically, we are, I'm sure council will just be taking back this information, trying to digest what we heard tonight and have further discussion together. I would hate to um kind of make a decision about what we're going to do without the mayor being involved in that conversation as well as she's been really active um and even bringing this meeting together. And so I think that's the best um response I can give you, Amber, looking for tangible um feedback from council that I think we have to have a little more time to talk um and digest some of this. So um with that and keeping to what our mayor wanted was to stay within respecting folks' time. It is nine oh two, so I'm going to call the meeting. Um if there, Clark Kalengo? Because we are, because we're in a joint session, do we have to have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Um yeah, there would be need to be a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that move, motion.
So there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Four.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Thank you all for your attention and attendance and I hope to see you all again soon. Be safe. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night, Andrew. Geez, where's Chief Hobbs, man? He's always last on here.
Um I didn't send links to all the department heads. There are just so many people on. I wanted to kind of minimize the 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 screens that we had open.
Yeah, I was just joking. He's always hanging out last. And there's just.
Come on, I was gonna come in and and say, you know, I'm I'm here too. Don't worry.
All right.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Yep, me too. Amber, I don't think this is the end of the conversation at all.
Hope not, because we're leveraging the fact that we're going to take it to a petition, you know, so just saying that right now.
Yeah.
We appreciate the work that's been done and we really look into this and really, we take it seriously. So we appreciate the work that's been done and all the comments.